Like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, May 20th, 2021. No, it's not. What am I looking at? This is not an e-session.
Ahead of yourself there.
As I started to read, I'm like, what? Today is May 18th, 2020. How about that? And this is a Prescott City Council work session on the budget. Uh, let's call roll, please.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Here.
Mayor Potemshul.
Here.
Councilman Blair. We'll be late to the meeting. Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusin.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Good to see you all. Thanks for being here. Mr. Woodfield, this is your show.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Mark Woodfield, Budget and Finance Director, for those of you who don't know me. So today we're going through the budget. Just a real quick reminder of our calendar. Obviously, the budget's been going on six, five months, last five or six months involving all the departments, most of which, all of which are here. Takes hundreds of man-hours to get the budget to the point that we have it today, just across the city as a whole. Uh, we're on the 18th, which is our first workshop on this. We have another workshop scheduled for the 25th next week if council has other things they want to cover that they, that we couldn't cover today or can't cover in another way. And then following that, of course, we have our budget hearings and budget considerations in June. So the budget presentation today, uh, last week, we published the detailed 22 budget on the website by department. It's about 165 pages, goes through all the departments, their missions, their goals, their org charts and all that other thing is out there. We also have the five-year capital plan, which is actually six years. We have the current budget year for 22, and then we have 23 through 27 capital. And that whole thing is out on the website with the detailed backup slides. For each one of those, it's about another 188 pages. So hopefully you guys all read that before we came in today. It was required. Today's presentation, we're going to look more at a summary across the city, cover what's changed, what's different from the year before. Because of the anomaly of last year, you may have heard there was a pandemic. It kind of affected the economy in a lot of ways. It affected the way we did budget when we did it last year. We've decided to present three years. We're going to look at 20, 21, and 22, and we're going to compare 22 to 20. 21 was such an anomaly, things were adjusted as we go forward. So we're going to more look at a three-year or that trend over those three years. The proposed budget is structured to, of course, maintain all the service levels we currently have. Additional small service level, not small, significant, just wonderful service level change being proposed by the fire department, which they'll go over a little bit later. But other than that, it's going to be the same level of service. And as always, um, with staff is available for council or the public. If there's any questions or any additional detail or other things that you need, feel free to contact us and we'd be glad to sit down with you and get you whatever you need. So looking at the budget, kind of in summary, just in the five bullet points. The class and compensation study that council looked at back in January is included in this budget. There's needed positions that were added in this budget. Three long-term temps were made permanent, and there's 7.25 new positions, which we'll talk about. Training and other operational budget things that were frozen during the pandemic have been freed up as we're coming out of the pandemic. Those most significantly are training. Obviously, our employees need training to be able to be as good as they can be. So we need to get that freed up, and that is freed up as we move forward. We have the American Rescue Plan, the next or the second federal subsidy plan that was coming out with monies to the city. That has been included in this budget. We have tentative final rules came out last week on that, which is kind of a weird federal way to put rulemaking. Tentative final means that if you fall within these final rules as a city, you can start requesting money. There will be final rules, which will hopefully be more liberal, a little more open to what we can spend that money on as they get to the final. The League of Arizona Cities, the National League of Cities is all working with the federal government to clarify some things that are very restrictive, frankly, in the current set of rules that we hope will be loosened up when we get to the final rules. For instance, saying so we could spend it on the first one, we could spend it on public safety salaries. This one is very restrictive of what you can spend it on for public safety salaries. So we did include, it was anticipated that that money would be distributed half one year and half the next. So we have half of what we were told we were going to get in the 22 budget. Along with the tentative rules, what came out was a new distribution schedule. So we went from 6.4 million down to 5.9, which is, of course, a reduction of almost half a million dollars. But we have enough appropriation to cover in there what it is. We may adjust that as we get to the final budget, but we could only go with what we had. The capital budget is 98.9. We're going to talk a lot about capital today. In the book, we have the whole six-year capital trend. In the slides today, I've added columns that we didn't have in years past, which include the capital from 23 to 27, that additional five years, but only for the capital projects that have budget in FY '22. So if it's a future project, we don't have time to spend as much time fleshing those out. If it's in the current year, we do, and we thought it was important for council to know it might be 900,000 this year, but this project is going to need 6 million over the next year. So we wanted to give you that more depth on these individual projects we're working on. But again, if it didn't have any budget in '22, it is in the backup on the website. It was discussed, but uh, we're only focusing on the projects that start in '22. Also, we have the 9.9 was structured to make it a capital plan that could be more achievable in the public works realm. In the past, we've always budgeted with the best of hopes so we can get things done, and that just never seems to happen in public works between weather and contract issues and other things. So working with public works, they came down with a budget that they feel is more realistic to have in there. The capital also addresses some issues that have been delayed. It's been a difficult 12 years at the city between the recession, and then we went right into the PSPRS problem, which was multiple years, and then we went into a pandemic. Several things have been postponed and put out and which are starting to cause an operational problem. One of those is vehicle replacements. Vehicle replacements are always an easy thing to say. We'll just push that out. We just don't need it. We don't need it. So we look to vehicle replacements, and we got to get those up to date. We got to bring our fleet aids down in public safety and those other areas. The vehicles are becoming more and more unreliable, costing us more and more in maintenance. So we're going to talk about that, and it is included in this budget. 6.2 million this year in vehicle replacement, and over the six-year planning period, uh, we're at 28.2 million. So it is significant. And that includes 55 new vehicles that need to be replaced this year, which is a significant bite. It's a lot more than we've done in the last few years. And obviously, it's going to be challenging with the pandemic and the issues surrounding coming out of pandemic with supply chain issues. You drive around town, you look at dealers lots, there's no real cars. So we're hoping that we can get those vehicles. Obviously, we're, we'll see as we go into the year, but we need to budget for them. We need to start moving with it. And there's also some facilities repairs, significant safety repairs that have been postponed over the dismal few years we've had that need to be addressed, and they're included in this budget. And we're going to look at those as well. So with that, I just wanted to look at two quick slides related to the compensation plan, which we looked at back in January. Again, just to remind everybody, the reason we did it was there is a lag in market in general employees and police and fire that we were below the market. So I brought forward the slides that we had on that. Implementing this plan, we're on slide six, if you guys are keeping it up, is about approximate cost of 1.5 million, which is included in this budget. We combined it with a COLA increase. So if you were going to get a half a percent increase or 1% increase because of the raise, but we were doing a 2% COLA, you get the 2% COLA. So there is the count by employee positions. 224 are just going to be getting the 2%, and then others will be getting more depending on how far off from market their salaries were. Again, these are the same slides you saw back in January. Just wanted to refresh everybody's memory, and we did include this.
Quick question. Back to the last slide. It says 2% COLA or the market adjustment rate, whichever is higher?
Yes. Right. So if you were going to get a half percent market, you don't, you get a 2%.
Would you do it for three?
It's three, exactly. The three positions that we convert from long-term temp, we have had to use temporary employees throughout the last 12 years as we've dealt with this because they're not permanent. It's easier to eliminate those positions if we get in financial downturn. But these three positions have been long-term temporaries. They're already receiving retirement benefits because it's required if they work over so many hours. They're already receiving health insurance because it's required if they work over so many hours. So the only real cost to making them permanent is they now get holiday and they get PTO. And again, they're also a permanent employee with, you know, some assurance that their job will be here tomorrow as they move forward. So those are the three positions, the human resource specialist, administrative specialist position in the PD, and then we had a GIS tech, which is doing public safety, GI, or sorry, public works, GIS work. Then we have 7.25 new positions. Uh, one is an airport operations supervisor. Again, uh, there's been a little growth at the airport. You guys might have seen this last year. They needed additional personnel out there to make that happen. Uh, we have administrative specialist in the city manager's department. That's only halftime. They need that at three-quarter. That additional quarter of a percent person will be charged to the bed tax because that's the area that they will be working on. IT specialists, these are our help desk techs that go out and help everybody with their computers. Uh, we added one of those because of the continuation of more and more computers. Public Works had two positions, an equipment operator in streets and an administrative specialist in the general public works area. And then we had the fire department, and uh, there are three new positions that they're proposing a new level of service with. With that, I'll have Dennis Light is here to come down and talk about that.
Well, first off, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, Dennis Light, Fire Chief. The three new positions that we're looking for your support and fulfilling today are necessary to relieve some of our extended response times along with unit reliability. And I'll kind of touch on each of those topics independently of one another. But uh, you know, we've experienced over the last, probably the last six to eight years, naturally with added capacities of development, with our sources reaching kind of at the end of their capability to meet some of those needs relative to our community. What is being proposed is the addition of these three personnel is the commissioning of an alternative response unit. Something probably in many cases, less than a fire truck, something that's probably more robust, perhaps than a brush truck in the sense of its ability to manage EMS calls. With that, the members, uh, right at the moment, we're going through some recruitment efforts at the entry level. So we have to kind of establish an eligibility listing. But what we would hope to do, if the positions are authorized, is to staff this unit on or about October 1st. That allows us enough lead time to kind of get our operational piece together in the Prescott Regional Communication Center, as well as work on our deployment strategy for the unit. What we've tried to dwell down on or drill down on is our data. As many of you are aware, perhaps Councilman Tenney isn't, but we went through an accreditation process back in 2019. And one of the elements for that that became evident was the substandard unit reliability. And what that means in as layperson terms as I can get it is that when a 911 call occurs, that a unit is in district, which means it's defined run area, and that it's available and not on another call. Well, in the downtown area specifically, which is serviced by two fire stations, Station 71 on White's Bar and Station 72 down on Sixth Street, is that reliability factor is now down around 60%, which means six out of 10 calls, that truck is in its district and available. But it also means four out of 10 calls, it's not. What we think we can do and what we believe we can do, and what the data would seem to indicate and support, is by staffing an alternative response unit, we can lower that response time or lower that need from a fire engine to something lesser. Therefore, keeping that engine and that fire truck in station or in its general operating area for that call that comes out that's truly emergent. A reliability factor ideal for any community of any size is about 80%. So we're about 20 percentage points below that. There's realization that callers or fire trucks run calls, and they're supposed to be busy. But when you get the point where they're just above half the time available, it becomes very problematic for the system because when Station 71 on White's Bar and 72 on Sixth Street are occupied, it means a fire truck has to come from either Lee Boulevard, Smoke Tree, or Williamson Valley Road. That elongates the response time, which our response times even through the accreditation process were upwards of nine minutes total response time, which is three minutes beyond national best practice. Now, I'm not advocating to get to best practice. What I think we need to do is release some of the workload that these two fire engines are doing, and we can do that through an alternative response unit. Secondary to enhancing the reliability is the need to right-size our, our response. Everybody at the diocese at one point or another has asked me, either casually or from the diocese, "Chief, why does a fire truck respond when something lesser could perhaps do?" This will help bridge that gap a little bit, that we aren't running fire trucks on calls that are low acuity in the sense that it will be most likely a pickup truck equipped for ALS support. But it's more low-acuity calls in the sense that it's more of a stub tow, those kind of calls that we still have to fulfill. Snake calls, smoke alarm detectors, those, but it doesn't require the full service capability or toolbox that comes with a fire truck. It also does us well to help on our high-risk fire response. These folks will work in a cross-staffing environment, that they will have a fire truck available, and they'll have a lower-profile vehicle available. Should we have a high-risk buyer, for example, in an assisted care facility? You have a, you have bi-regional medical center or one of those really complex buildings that requires more water flow and those kind of things, they will still have the option at least 40 hours a week to supplement that response package, to add an engine company to that total response package. Finally, we also look forward to the future. Everybody at this table and uh, out in the audience is well aware, uh, you know, budgets are tough. And in the fire service, it really kind of gets magnified by, we don't add value or bad, add capacity by just adding one person. I don't have that opportunity to do that. This three-person concept in a 40-hour should bridge much of our peak call volume through the week. Along with that, it also puts us one step closer to the eventuality when we add a new station that will have three of the 12 required folks to open that station two, three years down the road. So we're trying to be forward-thinking while at the same time working now to improve the service that we provide to the community to enhance the overall reliability that when people call 911 for an all-risk emergency response, that we're ready, available, and there to respond. And with that, I'd welcome any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Questions, comments from the council? Uh, Councilman Good?
Thanks, Chief, and um, I know we've been talking about being able to get one of these fast trucks for years, quite frankly. A lot of it has to do is being able to have the Regional Communication Center do a better job of triaging some of these calls. So have, have we made improvements in that area so that we can identify likely a low-acuity response that is probably a slip and fall or something like that? And is this firefighter or engineer going to be expected to be a paramedic as well?
Well, last part of that question first, uh, we've established a paramedic level of service. So one of the three members that would be assigned to the 40-hour unit would be of a paramedic level provider. And the reason for that is there's nothing that prohibits them if they're driving by a call in order to render aid if they're out and about in the community already. So we don't want to lower that level of service. Secondary to that is the PRCC piece to this. Uh, we've worked very diligently with our Lifeline ambulance partners to speed up things in the process. We haven't quite got to the point where we feel the comfort levels there to just turf certain calls to the ambulance company. But we've made measured and marked improvements on the dispatching piece, that they get the information in a timely fashion to the point their reliability to showing up first on scene, and they've made changes to their deployment, that the first unit can cancel the balance of the assignment. So if we're first on scene, we can oftentimes cancel the ambulance, therefore enhancing the entire system. Sometimes they beat us to the scene now, which uh, up until we did the, some of the negotiations locally, that occurred maybe nine, one time out of every 10. Now that's more closer to probably four or five times out of 10 because they've adjusted their response criteria. And with that, when they get there, we're canceled and we're available. So we've enhanced the reliability. And the final piece on that is we've also got a CAD-to-CAD link-up that they get the stuff in real time. There was always finger pointing, you know, you held that call, you didn't respond. Well, that communication is now taken out of the human piece of that pie and it's done automated. And with that, we've seen market improvement. So hopefully that touched on most of your question there, Mr. Good.
I think it is because um, I think this, these quick trucks are a a good solution for providing faster response times, and we know how critical they are. As the Dupell Ranch and the additional residential neighborhoods are developed, do you have sufficient set-aside land out there for potentially a new fire station, substation, whatever? Because I think the closest one is right there by the Centennial Center, and that's more kind of tied in with airport operations to a certain extent, is it not?
Yes, sir. In fact, uh, I believe we'll get to the capital slide here down the road. We're looking, and the advantage to the north end is my predecessors did a really good job of citing that fire station. The problem was it was '72, '73 when they did that. So most of the construction has taken place south to make that an optimal operating station. And we've identified in capital both a land acquisition need along with design, and then the out-year would be a construction piece. To relocate Fire Station 73 primarily to the south of where it's currently at, we don't have land secured at this particular junction. Myself and the facilities folks, Director Baines, have had that conversation a little bit. We're looking to see where we may site that, but that is in the works. That's a relocation, which the advantage to that is it doesn't add people. There's no human capital for a long-term cost. But just demand, uh, we are faced at the point where right now our five fire stations, four years from now, are probably going to be less efficient to cover the, the physical footprint of the city. So I would anticipate, uh, you'll probably see a little bit of me and perhaps my successor here in the coming years coming back because we need to add that capacity. And this gets us a fourth of the way there with the people piece, which is the long-term cost.
All right, those are, I think they address most of my concerns. Are we still looking at about an 85% non-fire-related incident percentage?
Yeah, well, non-fire, yes. But EMS is running around 60 to 62%. Our other risks, which are inclusive of tech rescue, which is field and high angle, ARF, aircraft rescue firefighting, hazardous material response, technical rescue in other disciplines, shoring, those kind of things kind of make up the balance. Our fire service calls, which are actual working fires, are probably about 7% or less.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman, uh, Councilman Rusin?
I just have a question. Uh, you mentioned a future fire station up north around the airport. Uh, about how much land would you be looking at to acquire?
That's a very challenging uh, question to answer here from, from the lectern. It really depends on the land layout and its access to good major roadways. A fire station, citing a fire station is a 50-year investment, as we've experienced with the current Station 73, and you only get one shot at it. Uh, so I'm very conservative in looking at the location first as to the, where the need is, and then reaching out and seeing what lands uh, may be available in that particular area. You know, I think uh, as a city and a chief that came in after some decisions have already been made, you know, some of our choices weren't necessarily the best long-term choices. Properties, for example, on Smoke Tree right now is a very problematic location because of the traffic flows. Similar situation with Fire Station 75 up on Lee, where you have encroachment of vehicles, and we've had many near risks or near misses for our members when they're backing in or leaving from a fire station. We've put in some passive ways and means to kind of monitor that and try to abate the hazard. But uh, that's one of the challenges you face is if you cite it wrong, it's wrong for 40 years. And uh, I offer my due diligence that I don't want the, the mistake to be held against my good name. And uh, so I want to do it right and do it right the first time. That's why we work with our fleet or facilities folks and see what land's available, and then make the choice based upon the optimum operating location.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Tenney?
Chief Light, you mentioned that a lot of, what we're talking about here is, is pointing toward it improved response times, which I really appreciate. I think that people can get their heads around that really well. At one point, I think I heard you mention that um, there's, there's a standard where we're at, there's best practice, and we're shooting for about halfway there. You're not advocating for best practice. Inform me a little bit more about why that's not the case. Is it simply financial, logistical challenges to that? Are we getting closer to that all the time and we're doing the best we can? Help me out there.
Well, Councilman Tenney, it's a couple, a couple of different things in play here. First and foremost is our geography. It's really tough to say we would love a six-minute or less, 90% of the time response criteria, when you have to go around things to get to things. So that combined with just the, uh, kind of the infrastructure as far as road design and long before many of us were here, uh, that road design was kind of predetermined for us. So we've tried to plug and play as best we can, but that's one of the contributing factors. And just to offer a little bit of uh, metrics onto this uh, conversation. And, and I'm just talking the first unit arrival right now, and this is for an emergency lights and siren type response. Our travel time right at the moment is sitting at about eight minutes and 44 seconds. 2020, that was, this is the aggregate over four years. 2020, it was nine minutes. The year before, it was 8:46. Year before that, it was 8:53, and the year before that, it was 8:18. So in culmination, what that's saying is our response times are getting longer. And that's just a single-unit response. If you get into multi-unit responses, the effective response force is how many sets of hands you need to be at the scene. That ERF draws out over time, and uh, if it's a fire, every fire basically doubles in size for every five minutes that it progresses before arrival. So that's very dangerous for this community.
Makes sense. Sounds like it's more a logistical piece in Prescott's case than, than anything else.
Yeah, if we were a perfect, flat, gridded street system, we would have no problem meeting the needs of the community at a six-minute or less. We're just not that community.
Not driving down Bell Road to 97th and making a left, and you're there. I get it.
Thank you very much.
Other questions, comments from the council for chief?
Mayor, I just wanted to add something.
Mayor, I just wanted to add something. You know, we've talked a lot about this low acuity vehicle being part of our toolbox for a while. And I think there's real advantage is utilizing what the chief has alluded to, which is database timing of this three-person crew. And it also pays dividends going forward that if this works, we may show that low acuity calls remain a large percentage of our overall call buying, or maybe they're higher than we even realize. So the next capital purchase might be something different than a fire truck, which gets back to the chief's first comments that it's about having the right personnel number and the right equipment number to respond to the nature of the call. And you have to start somewhere with this low acuity concept. And I think a single shift that is data-based in terms of when the people are on shift, it just makes a lot of sense.
And plus to add to that, just a real schmidge in there as well. The advantage of a 40-hour unit is also beneficial to the balance of the system. There's oftentimes where I have to take an engine out of service to train. While I can plug them into the system so we don't suffer because somebody's down at the Sun Dog Training Area drilling and have a long response time because they're out of district. So there are stuff to be leveraged and compounded by this unit, but I have to, I kind of have to start somewhere. And this is a concept that's out there amongst my, my professional colleagues, and I think it's one that will work here, but I want to take a baby step to get there before I start running at a marathon pace.
Very good. Anything else for chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. So as we look at our positions with these additions, we'll be at 518 positions in fiscal 22, which is approximately where we were back in 2005. So on this graph, you can see our trend as we, as we went through time and the recession and the PSPRS issues and the pandemic and those things. It is kind of interesting how it looks like thumb beautifully though. So moving on to vehicles. So to try to overcome some of the issues we have with our fleet this year, Joe Baines and Justin and I worked with Enterprise Fleet Management, and I've stole the, with their permission, stole the next two slides from them just to kind of have some talking points on how important the fleet is. As we sit right now, we have about 400 pieces of inventory in our fleet. Our average age is 13 years. Our date, our age range from one year to 30 years on some of this equipment. Again, this is just a simplistic graph and realizing, of course, that our fleet is made up of several different factors. We have fire trucks, which have much longer age ranges than a police car, which is used a lot, runs a lot of hours. So they all have different ranges. So this is just kind of a simplicity to show, this is actually showing our white fleet, which is the pickup trucks and the cars that our inspectors and everything else out there use on a day-to-day basis. As you can see, we're out in the current replacement window, which is out there where maintenance costs are significantly higher than they should be. Fuel costs are up because the vehicles are getting old, they're less efficient than the new vehicles, gas prices, and of course, the vehicles are fully depreciated from an accounting standpoint. Optimally, you want to move that replacement cycle back a bit, and that's what we're trying to do over time. We're not trying to get there all in one year, but we are taking a pretty big step this first year to overcome some escalating demands in our maintenance area. Another thing to keep in mind, looking again at the white fleet, this is another one from the fleet management company. It uses traffic lights, that's fun. Something I didn't know till we started looking at with the company, that according to the industry, electronic stability control is the most significant safety invention since seat belts. For those of you who didn't know that, it is quite significant. Obviously, they have different safety criteria over there, and they put 129 of our 168 white fleet vehicles in the red category as not being as safe as they should be. So beyond the maintenance costs, beyond the reliability costs, and the fact that we're going to have to get more mechanics if we keep having old vehicles, you have an issue that employees are driving vehicles and aren't as safe as they should be or could be. So all these things, that's why we're looking at trying to bring that age of our fleet down to a more realistic number based on the type, you know, dump trucks have a longer life, trash trucks shorter lives, like I say. But we're moving forward with that in this budget. You'll see it this year, you're going to see it the next few years as well. Significant expenses to bring those, those numbers down. So enough, enough of all that, let's talk about the overall budget. The 22 budget is $228,444,604 as proposed. This is a 3.8% increase from 20. Obviously, it's a significant increase from the pandemic budget, which was restricted. Our operating budget went up 3% over that two-year period, which is a, is not terrible considering we have the class and compensation in there. We have other things being established in there. Obviously, I broke out PSPRS because that's just depending on what the tax is, that comes in, that goes out. And then our capital budget is down to 4.8. Contingency is up. Again, this is a new thing. We're trying to get capital in public works down where it needs to be. We also have grant potential with the American Rescue Plan and other things. We all have other things out there that we need to keep contingency because the city budget is a legal level. You cannot exceed it. If you have to do something and you don't have the budget, you can't do it as a city. So we felt it was important to keep a contingency, a budget appropriation level that could be moved to wherever the council felt it needed to be over the next 12 months or 15 months. So that's why that's a 12.5 this year. Wouldn't be spent unless council decided it needed to be moved to, I don't know, by City Hall or something like this year. Hopefully, we won't do two of those, but as we move forward. So with that, let's talk about revenues. How are we going to pay for all this? My next four slides talk about cash receipts, and they're, they're ones you've seen before. Want you to keep in mind the proportionality of a category to the overall city revenue stream. General merchandise is our big one, 40%. Hotels is currently the smallest at three. Obviously, a downturn in a category in a three is a lot less impactful than a downturn in the 40. This is the last four months of last fiscal year. Basically, when the pandemic started in March to the end of the year, you can see where the losses were. Obviously, motor vehicle was first. Got hit pretty bad the first two months. Restaurants and bars were hit terribly. As we look at these, these are comparisons, and forgive me for a second, we're just going to do a real quick math lesson here. These are comparisons to the month before, or the, the same month the year before. So if you have a category that went down 50% last year, how much does it have to go up this year to be at the same level? 100%. And the further down it goes, the higher that proportionality is. So for instance, we look here, hotels were down 77% in, in April. They'd have to have a 335% increase to just be back to where they were. So just keep that in mind as we look at these percentages as we go forward. And I'm again, sorry for this graph. A lot of data, I wanted to give you the full year so you could see the trend for each of these things. As you can see, March was a huge month for auto sales. Of course, that's coming off a negative last year, but it was a small negative. So, you know, it was down 14%. So it would have had to go up 16 just to be even. It went up 63. So that's a 43% increase. Again, that was probably related more to the American Rescue Plan, more money out there. People got stimulus checks, decided to upgrade cars. Also probably had to do with supply chain issues. Aren't as many cars, cars cost more, more tax. So the way sales tax works, it's based on the dollars, of course. Is this, is that trend something that can continue? I doubt it. Again, you have supply chain issues, you drive around, you look at car lots, they're pretty empty. Hopefully, it'll continue to be strong, but I don't think it'll be as strong as March. March was very good. Construction is down again, like months that were negative, construction was high last February, March, being down a little this month isn't terrible. It isn't signal anything. Obviously, construction has its own challenges with supply chains issues. Lumber is currently five times what it was a year ago in cost. Copper and steel have doubled. So there are significant costs. What the National Homeowners, Home Builders Association said, that lumber prices alone have added $39,000 to the cost of a median house across the country. A quick question, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Do you break out motor vehicle sales and repairs separately to look at that?
We can. Motor vehicle repairs are a smaller part of the whole motor vehicle sales. We include them together because they're all kind of motor vehicle related.
I just know with this ongoing supply chain for constriction of parts and sensor chips that are in every new vehicle, it's really reducing the amount of inventory available. And I would think that that would probably push more repairs because people can't get the new car and they're probably repairing their older car.
Absolutely, Councilman, and I think you're right. I don't think looking at the tax collection reports is going to reflect that clear picture of that because a lot of a car repair cost is labor, which isn't taxable, which wouldn't be in these numbers. It's only the parts portion, which is, since it is that, such a small portion of that industry is taxable, we include it with just motor vehicle here.
Okay. Councilman Tenny had a question.
A quick question, going back a couple of slides on the contingency piece. You described well why we would want a contingency. I fully appreciate that. I must have missed, maybe you could educate me really quickly. Again, we're comparing largely next year's fiscal budget with 20, and I get why we're doing that. The contingency that, that we set aside in financial year 20 was 4 million. We're looking at roughly three times that for next year. You may have mentioned it and I missed it. Why are we looking at such a contingency?
I'm sorry. Yeah, it's because of the potential of grants through the American Rescue Plan, other than the ones we know of. It's because of potential other grants that might be out there as well as the change in the way we're doing capital budgeting. If, for instance, weather's great and contractors are everywhere and we can get road projects done, we may need to move a little bit back into the cap, public works area. So we felt it was important. Back in 20 was before we started to really feel the need for those contingencies. Obviously, you can see in 21, we started feeling the need for them. I think, I think it's, it's definitely, you know, you'd always, you always want to have the legal capacity because as you know, these school budgets or city budgets are legal levels and you cannot overspend them.
Absolutely. I caught broadly why it's just good budgeting. I was, I was curious about why the difference, and if I understood you correctly, two, so the grants piece could, would affect this in that we're needing to match some? Or if grants become available, then we, we pay for what had been budgeted through that? And then we're looking at, at other, other projects that we could do with these contingency funds that we've set aside?
No, it's really more if, if you don't budget for a $10 million grant and one comes available and you get it, you can't spend it because you don't have budget appropriation. This would give you that budget appropriation, you can move to that grant, whether it didn't have one local dollar in it, you would still need $10 million of budget appropriation.
Okay, okay. So we're not just looking at the general operations of our own here. This is any cost that we might incur.
That we might be able to get.
Thank you, appreciate that education.
Councilman Tenny, along, Mark explained this as well, but there are limitations on some of these federal dollars, and you as a collective haven't decided how you want to spend it based on the fact you don't know how much discretion you have to spend it. You have to have that in the budget. Otherwise, you can't spend it at all. But we haven't selected a project or projects. So you have to have, that's 3 million of it, plus or minus.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, technically there, yes. And there's just a lot of reasons you want to have that flexibility.
Totally makes sense to me. I appreciate the education. Didn't mean to back us up.
Oh, no problem. And again, just for everybody's clarification, the city charter prevents the city manager or the finance director from moving that appropriation anywhere except contingency. That has to come back to a council vote done in a public hearing. So, you know, by separating it out as a contingency, you're not saying, go crazy, go spend. You guys have to move that to make that happen.
We're not putting ourselves in a situation where we have to redo the entire budget discussion multiple times.
Yeah. And you can't, I mean, if you don't budget for it in the middle of the year, you can't like redo the 22 budget.
Thank you for the clarification.
The other thing we're all waiting on too is the possibility of an infrastructure bill. If we get an infrastructure bill from the federal government, it's a direct subsidy or indirect through the state, and you don't have any place to drop the infrastructure money, you can't spend the infrastructure money. So a lot of it has to do with the federal government kind of being partially down the road on these things, but not all the way down the road. Is that fair, Mark?
Yeah, we just don't have clear guidance. Even what we got is not clear, it's not final. It's tentative final, as they call it. Just real quick one to point out, also between these two graphs, I kept the scale the same. So you can, the graph, the lines are the same size. As you can see, restaurants and bars had a great month. They were up 38%, but again, we're dealing with math. So that's still 8% lower than their average. So it was a great month, but it's still not back to where they were. Hotels, motels were up 82%, which is excellent. Again, that, and that is above where they were, so that's slightly better. Again, this is on tax collected. Like I said, March was strong. We see it there at 20% over the March before. Of course, the March before had some challenges. Again, this is all related to the thing. Year to date, that puts us at about 12% up, which is an incredible number for this year. Obviously, we have stimulus money that people have gotten and people have spent, which is what the purpose of it was. And unfortunately or fortunately, that's not an ongoing thing. So that's not a continued growth that you would really expect to be seen. So, you know, what we're expecting next year is not going to be as strong as this year for sure. Those slides were all on tax collected. This is actually on taxable activity through March. That's July through March of the year, and we're at 12.18 with $1.5 billion of taxable activity in the city. So you can see construction is, is, might've had a few negative months, but it's still very strong when we look at the, those nine months together, almost 8%. Restaurant and bars are still down 8.6 as well as hotels are actually up a little bit compared to the year before. Other services is down. That's an anomaly we're working on with Department of Revenue and our outside auditor. We hire an outside sales tax auditor. We have one very large taxpayer who has quit paying under one number and we believe is paying in different areas. So it's probably more of a reallocation of those monies up to retail sales or something. But it is an area that we are researching. Several cities are actually researching. It's not just a big taxpayer here. With that, I also wanted to throw the bed tax numbers up, just to, they're great numbers. So I wanted to put them up. We always want good news. As you can see, we had 112% increase in March, which is incredible numbers. Again, March was lower because of the pandemic. I would expect you're going to see three, 200, 300% increase in April because again, last year, March or April was terrible at 17. So we'll see as we move forward and I'll continue to send these, these two reports that we just looked at are the same ones I send council every month when I get the numbers from the Department of Revenue. So we will continue that. So with that, let's look at revenues as a whole. This is revenue citywide as a whole. With all those things that we just discussed in mind, we have projected revenues, sales tax revenues at 39.6 million. That's 16% up from the 20. So that's about 8% increase year to year if you split it over the two, but we feel good. It's still relatively conservative because I do not feel next year is going to be as strong, excuse me. We're probably not going to get special checks in the mail next year to spend on things that we wouldn't have necessarily bought. PSPRS tax is budgeted about the same. Bed tax, we're budgeting 100,000 more than last year, although it's still below the high of bed tax, which was in 20, which was 1.1 million. I think it'll be a little while before we, we get that far up, but we'll see. Hopefully, it'll rebound quicker and we have more inventory also, so it could. We, we hope to be disappointed in our estimate there. Property tax are up 4%. That is totally related to new construction being added to the rolls. The tax rate actually went down. The tax rate actually went down 4.3, which we'll see on the next slide. Franchise taxes are the Unisource APS and cable, not cable, Sparklight, thank you. Those are pretty stable. Intergovernmental revenues, again, this does not take into account the 1.5 billion that the state is looking to take away from the income tax base. We're waiting to see what happens on that. So we may need to cut that estimate as we get further down in the budget cycle. License and permits are down from 20. Again, this is from 20. Big part of that is the fact that we used to have business license back in 20, and we got rid of them. So that was a big chunk of it as well. There's a reduction in building permits from the, in the 2020 levels. The license, the governmental service fees are actually down just a little bit. That also is the result of plan check fees being slightly down from 2020 and the fact that parks and recreation, which represents a portion of these remodel rentals and parking fees and all those things. We took a relatively conservative approach there, not knowing how coming out of the pandemic is going to affect those things or what, what we're going to need to do there. And we didn't want to over, over project revenues because that way you keep your expenditures under control in those areas. And we can always correct any misprojection we had as we move into the next year. Fines and forfeitures are down significantly from 2020, but fines and forfeitures have been dropping for five years, basically based on a different approach by the criminal justice system on how to have compliance of behavior. They've gone away from fines and more into corrective things. Utility services, solid waste are all up in relation to the rate study that we did a few years ago and council adopted. Airport services revenues are up, again, related to the expanding activity in the new terminal and the other things at the airport. And golf course services have a modest 5% increase. Those numbers come from our partner, Billy Casper out there. Internal service charges are just down in proportion to 20. They're actually about where we expect them to end this year. They relate to our central garage, our fleet, our facilities and those things. They were just too high in 20, so that's not an anomaly that we need to worry about there. And then the others, impact fees and interest revenues, and that's slightly up. The grants, of course, is a projection of what grants we think we'll be getting. Hopefully, we'll be getting from the airport, from police and, and the carers and all the other stuff that's out there. And the debt issue relates to WIFIL loans for water and wastewater projects. Did you have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out to council that as you look at your business enterprises across the board, the enterprise funds are doing very well in terms of expanding revenue opportunities. And when you take a holistic approach to the budget, that's, that's a positive trend. So fees for services are actually becoming a larger portion of the budget. And in each cases, each of those fees for services, if they're not completely self sustaining, they're doing better than they have historically. I think it's just a good thing to mention.
Yes, yes, definitely. And obviously, you know, we've talked about this at other presentations, but as a government, we have two forms of revenue, forfeitures, taxes where you're not related to your service, and of course, fee for service. And those are the only things council can really impact what you charge for a service that you provide. So you guys have done a great job taking those rate studies and implementing those rate studies. So overall, operating revenues are up 9%, which is, is great. Again, on the expense side, you'll see we're actually not up that much. Here's your property tax slide that we do every year, which I'm open to any suggested changes. I'm frankly getting tired of this one. But if you guys have something else you want to see. $200,000 house went from $49.68 city tax down to 47 in 22. If you're in CAFMA, you're still up in the $550 range. Yeah, and again, I've only been using a $200,000 house the last three decades or so. So if you guys want to see a higher number there, we can do a higher number. It's proportionally going to be the same. And here's expenditures that we were just alluding to. Again, general government is down. Big part of that is the fact that we got rid of business license back in 20. So that's out of there, but also bed tax is under general government. The operating expenditures there, and they were down. Community development, you know, most of the things would be up because of the class and comp study that went in place. In addition to that, see, community development is up because of grants. The CDBG grants are included in our community development and operating area. Fire is up. They moved community risk, risk reduction. Couldn't remember the initial, what it stood for. Community risk reduction wasn't building. It moved back to fire. That brought up some costs there. They also have the three new positions. The chief talked about how that's going to work. PD obviously had, PD and fire both had pay increases related to the compensation, but PD also had a position conversion to halftime. We have TASER replacements, which are a different way that we're doing stuff there, where they're more of a subscription service. Since a TASER only lives five years, they're doing it that way, the same way they're doing their body cameras, which are also in there that weren't in there, as well as gas for the vehicles has increased because, of course, we estimate gas prices are going to be higher this year than they were in last year. And then the airport, there was a new position. They added additional temp positions to help cover, you know, the off hours to have better coverage there. And of course, there's increased costs to having a new terminal, water utilities, doggy, plastic bags for the walking area, and all that good stuff. So overall, you can see that our operating budgets are only going up 4% or only 4%, but that's 4% from two years ago. So I think that's pretty good considering all the things we have included in here. Of capital, public works is down for the reasons we've already talked about. Airport is up. They have capital things that Robin's going to talk to us about here in a minute. Recreation, of course, capital is up and all, all other is up as well as contingencies. And we're going to go into detail on the capital here. First of all, I just wanted to refresh everybody's memory on the general fund. This is the pie chart of the general fund, which was the Pac-Man eating all of our service levels back during the PSPRS issue. So we thought it'd be worth to bring back. 72.8% public safety. That's down from close to 80 when PSPRS was in full problem for us. And speaking of PSPRS, here is showing the payments that we've made and the payments we expect to make in 21 and 22. So as you all recall, in 17, we were $86 million unfunded liability at a 30% funding. Through 20, which is of course, the third year up there, we are down to 43 million in unfunded liability at a 70% funding ratio. And we continue to look forward to the PSPRS tax doing what it said. And we still feel we're on track to do it a year or two earlier than the 10-year projected. Obviously, PSPRS, a lot of changes over the years, just as an FYI. We had the new tier three, which is a sustainable tier, the way it was designed, more splitting. We currently have 21 police officers in tier three and three fire officers, or firefighters, I guess they call them, in tier three.
How many firefighters?
Three. Probably have three more once you fill the new positions for the. With that, we have a list of the bed tax projects that John and Ann brought forward. John is here. They're here to answer any questions you have on the change in funding from 22 on these. I don't know if you want to walk through them or if you guys had a chance to look at them and have a question.
I noticed that there's a dramatic increase in tourism office, sales, marketing, admin.
It's a reduction in the tourism office. And I guess, John, can you come up and speak to these?
Mayor Protim, do you have a question?
Yeah, my question is, I think I asked this last year. What we've done with the funding for the events that have been canceled? So like whiskey off-road is on this list and what happens to those funds?
They roll over and just are available in the fund balance.
Either way. I'll try this one. Hi, should I answer Councilman Shishas?
Yeah, go for it.
So we did some moving around in the administrative. We hired a new position. But what we also did was we, we split the pay. Each of our salaries comes half from the bed tax, half from the general fund because we're all doing economic development and tourism. So that might account for some of that shift. Sure. And then what we did with the TAC and PAC grand recipients is we gave them the option. A lot of them kept it and are using it this year. We wanted to give them that opportunity to do that. So we wanted to be flexible, last year especially.
John, I was just going to add a little bit. You know, we've upped the courthouse lighting significantly and the community events significantly. And I told John that because the lion's share of the COVID burden fell on hotels, motels and restaurants, and a lot of the courthouse light funding and community event funding has been the private sector having to go out and get donations and solicit donations from the private sector that we're not giving business grants from the COVID money. But I felt like the least we could do is for this next fiscal year, not put the burden of fundraising as much on the private sector downtown that we're doing pretty good and that there's a lot to be said for us, especially with the lighting project, that we take that on and do that. And I figured that I was not speaking out of turn for a lot of you when I think that that's a kind of a feel-good measure that's somewhat helpful to the business community.
And we'll actually bring that through. It'll go to TAC first, the request, and then it'll come to council for that final approval. We just wanted your market. Okay.
Thanks, John.
Okay, before we get into capital, just wanted to do just a quick recap on our fund balances on slide 25. General fund starts the year at 30 million. That's concerning where we're expecting to end the year. We're looking at surplus from operations of 5.5 million essentially. And then capital, which includes transfers to airport projects and to golf course projects and all those things, as well as that contingency, which if all that got spent, would bring it down to 14. But again, the contingency is more to have that budget appropriation out there. That gives us $11 million of unassigned. That's well above the 20% required. It brings us to about 26% of unassigned. And with that, I mean, we don't need to go over all these different numbers here. But as you can, if you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Questions for Mark on this one?
If not, we will get into the.
Councilman Good.
I'm sure you're surprised. I'm going to talk about PSPRS.
Okay.
We know that they missed their expected rate of return by over 6% this year. But with their smoothing process, we probably won't see much of a change in the unfunded liability part of the ARC, correct?
The, yes. Obviously, they do a seven-year smoothing for various reasons. One is to make a more stable approach to the unfunded liability level.
That still means that our total liability probably will grow about 6% even though it won't be reflected in our ARC payment.
Yes, technically, yeah. And again, the, the point of the smoothing is some years is supposed to be higher, although we haven't seen that the last few years. We keep hoping. Honestly, you know, as we've talked, I wish they'd bring down their expected rate of return to a more reasonable level, in my opinion, but
And I agree with that.
They hardly ever call and ask my opinion.
Nor do they ask for mine. But now that our state treasurer is going to be running for governor, maybe we will have a little more access to reasonable planning and performance in that group. But I think it's probably incumbent upon us to continue to have more of a level payment expectation because we probably are going to see a pretty good increase in performance over this last investment year that hopefully will perform better than they did over their vast last investment year. But, you know, that's still subject to their administrative overhead fees, which they don't seem to be modifying too much. So I just want to make sure that we understand that as the total annual required contribution payment drops, that it's all based upon hitting these numbers. And if they don't hit those 7.3% performance numbers, our total liability does go up, even though our payment is smoothed out with the average over the last seven years. But that still means that if we want to get to the point where we can sunset this tax and put it away, we have to be able to continue to pay a more substantial amount over and above what our tax collections are. Although I, I'm very impressed with the fact that our tax collections still are generating some significant payments that are going into that fund retirement, so to speak. There's a, there's a Freudian slip there, I suppose. I just think it's critical that we understand how those moving parts work.
I totally agree, Councilman. I think it's a real point that we need to look at as we get close to the end of that tax, for sure. With what, what do we want to do once that tax goes away? When they have a bad investment year? Do we, you know, some, some cities, Queen Creek is one that says we're going to budget X every year. I think they do 2 million. So that when they get their actuarial, actuarial report in December, if they're unfunded by a million or 2 million, they will write a check and bring that, that funding up. Yeah, so there is definitely, we need to, as we get closer to the end of the tax, we need to look at how are we going to keep the unfunded liability from coming back on us if we can't get PSPRS to modify assumed earning rates the way you and I would like them to?
All right, thank you.
With that, who wants to talk about airport? Not me, so we're going to bring Robin up.
My favorite topic.
Sure.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. So we're busy. Let's see, this slide is going to show FY22, basically the city-only funded capital projects as well as the grant-funded projects. So starting with the city-only funded projects, we've got a couple of big ones. One is the airport pavement preservation program. Now, a lot of folks don't know, we have actually 85 lane miles of pavement that we have to maintain out at the airport. So there's actually quite a bit. Next year, in this, in this capital year, we are actually looking at a resealing of our major main runway. So that's an extra 300,000 above the normal 2 to 300,000 we spend on airport pavement. The modular building relocation is actually the old TSA wing that had to be moved as a result of the basically decommissioning of the TSA at the old terminal and moving them to the new. We've moved it out to the west ramp, and we see that as a potential revenue generating source because we're having an increase in helicopter and fixed wing operations. And we're going to be using that old west ramp for helicopter and fixed wings. And that will be office and classroom space, which will be, probably get an ROI on that within four to five years. We'll return, get a return on investment for that. And we have some new vehicles and some replacement of vehicles, including a flammower and some regular operations vehicles that are going to be replaced and an airport master lock system to update because our locks haven't been updated in quite some time and it needs to be a discreet lock. So that's roughly about 993,000 on the top up there. Now we're moving into the airport grant-funded projects. So item, the first item on there, the taxiway Charlie realignment. We just bid that job out as a base bid and an add alt, which means that it can be done in one or two phases. Now, the actual Charlie project was broken into three phases, and the first one was already completed, just, just finished. When we rebid this one, the base bid is about 5.3 million and the add alt is about 11.1 million. We're waiting to hear from the FAA if they will fund just part of the project or all of the project. If they only fund part of the project, then one bidder will win. If they fund all the project, then another bidder will win. So they're waiting with bated breath, I'm sure, to find out the results of that. And the notice on that award may come as late as mid-September, so now we wait. But at least the base bid will be awarded this. the base bid will be awarded this fiscal year. The other big project is, that's a federal project, would be the environmental assessment associated with the runway extension. So if you look down at the fourth item, it says runway three right, two on left extension. This $500,000 is for the environmental assessment. This is the beginning of the pathway toward the runway extension. We are actually having a meeting tomorrow with the FAA for an update on the runway focused planning study with headquarter officials to see what the status is on moving forward with that project. The other federal, state, and local project is the Wildlife Hazard and Assessment Plan. That's the one that's $85,000. And anybody got any guess on what our most common wildlife hazard out there is?
That correct.
Porcupines. We've had more reports on those than many other things. Yeah, it's kind of interesting. There's many different reports out there. So anyway, we'll be looking at whether or not that wildlife poses a danger to air traffic and then do a management plan. Those are the federal plans. Everything else up there is a 90/10 with the state of Arizona. We've been very fortunate. Everything else up there was funded. We didn't expect it all to be funded, and they went right down our list and gave us five projects. Four we just most recently received. The biggest of those five projects is the perimeter security upgrade. So that's new fencing, new gates, new technology, cameras. It's fabulous. So we've been repairing those gates for a while, so these are really significant. So the bottom half of that list, the airport grant-funded projects, are approximately $14.6 million. And I think we're doing pretty well on that. The general fund, the airport balance down there, is a combination of the airport city-only funded projects and the city's share on the remaining projects. So I think it's a pretty good bang for our buck. Under the airport capital five-year plan, as we look forward, these are just the city-only funded projects. So the big ones coming in FY '23 may be a shade hangar acquisition project. What's happening with that one right now is we are waiting to see whether or not some of our other tenants who do have hangar requirements or building requirements will complete those requirements. In addition, in '23, there's a pavement preservation program, just like I mentioned on the previous page, some new vehicles and equipment, some, what do we call the bottleneck hangar area, some improvements in that area with the pavement. It's getting pretty old and cracked up. We need a new fueling system for vehicle fuel, and so that's programmed in. And also, we're looking at a badging system that may go into place if the airline does upgrade or upgaage to the larger platform aircraft. In '24, one of the big improvements will be the landside, I'm sorry, the vehicle service roadway. Now, what's interesting is Prescott Regional Airport does not have a vehicle service roadway all the way around the outside of the perimeter, which means that people frequently have to cross taxiways and runways. That's considered a safety issue. ADOT has recently advised us that they are willing to consider roadway projects, so we're going to be adding that one onto the stack of possible grant eligible as we move forward. We've got some landside expansion. If the airlines continue to expand their flights, we think we're going to need more parking. And also, we've got some vehicle replacements that are coming up, including in FY '25, we need a sweeper. So that's the big expense in '25. And then as you go all the way out to FY '27, you can see that there's some taxi lanes and ramp expansion that we need for some of the areas where we're going to be doing some hangar development. We eventually will look at a clubhouse drive extension study, a little bit controversial. Some of the residents down there at the resorts don't want a roadway around the end of the airport, but there are many, many folks that would like to be able to go from one side of the airport to the other side of the airport without going on to 89. So we'll look at that, but it looks like kind of five years from now. So now let's look at the ones that are grant-eligible projects. Here's some big ones. What you're looking at right now is approximately $90 to $91 million in possible grant-eligible projects. Those are in addition to the $14.6 million for this year. So we're looking at a six-year running total of about $105 million in potential federal, state-funded grant projects. We're looking at the runway extension. In '23, that's land acquisition for $2 million. In '24, that's looking at the design. And '25 and '26 is the actual construction. The combined total of roughly $64 million for the construction of the runway could be less if they don't allow expansion all the way to the 11,000 feet. We're still waiting to hear back. Is it going to be 10,000 feet, 11,000 feet? We could save some money there, but technically, it's the federal government saving money because we only have to pay 2.5% match on that. And indeed, if we do donate, for example, land or something like that, that land could potentially be used as a match for the percentage that we would need to donate our share or match. We're looking at some other big rehab projects, the taxiway delta rehabilitation. That one is going to be a $1.5 million. The south ramp and perimeter road rehab, that's another part of the roadway system that would be rehabbed along with a southern ramp where we can park additional airplanes. We are going to very quickly run out of space at the airport. We're right there. We're going to go out for some remaining RFPs with inside airport property within the next six months, and then we're done. We're just going to be landlocked. So this expansion, I think, is important in maintaining the facilities we have. The next item, it says ARF, but the main item here, it's $800,000 for design and $8 million for the actual construction. It's actually a snow removal equipment facility. The FAA requires that we properly store our snow removal equipment. We don't store ours with Public Works. We have our own separate storage out there. In addition, that will be an ops and maintenance facility, and if the FAA approves the movement of the ARF station, the ARF station could be co-located with that facility as well. So that is something that Chief Light and I have discussed, and the FAA will continue to evaluate as we look at the runway extension.
We can't just leave it out in the weather all year long?
We are currently putting it in like hangers, but it's supposed to be heated hangers, and so it's a little tricky because we're full.
Sounds like a good thing to do.
Yeah. The two rehabs, another two rehabs are the west ramp rehab. That'll be for additional revenue generating, hopefully, I think at some point. But for right now, it's showing as just a rehab, and we do park a lot of the US Forest Service aircraft out there when they're doing their firefighting missions, and another north ramp rehab. So on the previous page, you saw some designs. This is the actual construction of those items. And then ADOT's airport pavement maintenance system, it's a match to what they're doing in '24. And then we are looking at the possibility of a new ARF truck, depending on if we upgaage. The bigger you get, the more seats on the aircraft, the additional requirements are that you have larger equipment with more firefighting resources onboard. There is one error on here. It talks about the replacement airline terminal. It's actually the airline terminal expansion. So you know how we made the terminal expandable? This is actually the possibility of expanding and creating gate hold rooms three, four, and a ticket counter area in the event that we get additional air service, which appears to be continuing to climb. Some new vehicles and equipment are listed there, including some snow removal equipment in '27, and then some additional rehabs down on taxiway Echo and Foxtrot. So again, we're looking at a grand total, six-year total of $105 million in potential capital.
Thanks, John. Any questions for Robin?
Questions for Robin?
Okay.
And one thing that wasn't mentioned, if I may, is that we did get $1 million in Charissa Fund that can help offset some of the operating costs that you had seen on the previous slides. That's not reflected in the budget.
Thank you, Robin.
I had one other question. Some of this deliberation about acquiring some of the property around the perimeter of the airport would be considered as possible match funding for FAA funding as well?
Yes. So there's two ways to look at it. One is that the FAA may pay to acquire lands that are needed, for example, for fill for the extension of the runway, and then the city would acquire that with using federal funds. If the city independently does some type of land donation to the airport, expands the boundary of the airport to put it inside the fence line, that can constitute a potential match, but the FAA has to rule is that approach protection or what category it falls underneath.
Thank you.
Yep. Good. Thanks.
Thanks, Robin.
All right, the next few slides deal with the capital that is not Public Works, and then the remainder of the presentation is basically Public Works capital. As we go through these, we have all the department heads here. If additional questions come up, please feel free to ask them. We'll get you answers. Looking down the sheet here, we see the Center for the Future. That's a grant that they wanted us to put in for. It's not any additional funding. There could be a city match to that, or if the match comes somewhere else. The Granite Creek Corridor Master Plan Implementation, we've talked about that in council, as well as the Granite Creek Area Plan. C2BG Grants, which we just had a hearing on last week. We got another hearing on next week. Vehicle replacements for community development, as well as an ongoing scanning project, which they do to preserve their documents. Under Facilities, we have the 2.4, the remainder on the new city hall for the tenant improvements, and I have it in the budget here, working with Public Works on the building split, you know, how much of the building should be paid for by water or wastewater or whatever. We've brought it forward in this budget to not increase the internal loan, just to pay for this out of the available budgets, available fund balance that we have and the budgets that we have for the 2.4. So that would keep from increasing your internal loan, which I know council expressed a concern, to get that paid off as quick as we can. Obviously, one way to do that is not to increase it, to pay it off quicker. And there was room available in these budgets, believe we, 50% general fund, 20% water, 15% wastewater, 5% solid waste, and 10% streets. And I hope that added up to 100. That's what I recall.
Mark, can you remind me in our initial discussions about this, for tenant improvements, 2.4 would be the maximum we'd be looking at? And that's why we're...
Yes, and again, we all believe that's high, but I don't know when lumber's five times what it was six months ago, and copper and steel are double. You know, who knows where we're going to be depending on how quickly we actually do build it out. Parking lot refurbishment, again, these are some of the things that we talked about having been deferred that we need to stay on top of. You know, it's a lot cheaper to maintain parking lots than it is to rebuild them. Vehicle replacement facilities, there's some bathroom issues in fire stations that need to be remodeled. Apparatus bay floor at 71. Going to the next slide, Fire Department has some big ones here. Again, I think the chief is still here if you have questions on the drill ground improvements. Again, this was one of the reasons we wanted to present the full six-year period. Yeah, it's 928 this year, but it's $3 million over the six years. So thought council should be aware of that as we move forward, and also let the chief answer any questions on that, if you have any.
Yeah, just a little bit of added background. You know, we have some options to exercise when we work with our partner agencies, but we still require our own drill grounds for certain onsite stuff specifically to firefighting training and drivers' training because it's not an efficient way to drive all the way to the other side of Prescott Valley for us to train our folks in the day-to-day tasks. The first element in fiscal year '22, and we're hopeful that perhaps some of the infrastructure improvement monies that come forward in the next year, maybe we can get an early start on this, but we're hoping to maybe offset some of that. The water table at the drill grounds is not like it's 30 feet below level. It's right up within 18 inches of the surface. So there's some underground infrastructure improvements that need to enhance the drainage over the course of many, many, many years. A lot of Fire Department training's taken place there. So what we're hoping to do through the drill ground improvements is a phased approach to right-size again, hate to use that buzzword over and over, but what our training needs are into the future. We're not looking at this as a three- or four-year use. We're looking at this as a 25-year use. So making the investment now versus trying to source a new location and those kind of challenges that come with training firefighters, smoke generation, and being a good neighbor, it's really situated and cited really well. So we are hopeful that with council's approval that we'll continue to make incremental progress on this undertaking, with the understanding as the economic conditions change on the ground that we'll adjust our plan. George Henderson and Tim out of Public Works have been very instrumental in us developing a long-range plan for our needs there, and I feel very confident that those things will move forward as the budgetary allowances allow for. With that, any other questions that you might have of items under our auspices?
Well, another like comment on that is hopefully the American Rescue Plan does have some potential stormwater funding, and part of this is stormwater, so maybe part of it can be from that grant.
Questions for chief on this? Councilman, good?
Yeah, chief. I'm looking at vehicle replacements going out to fiscal year '27, almost $7.9 million. So is that just a expectation of retiring these expensive trucks that just reach their endpoint of functionality?
You're exactly right. We have two ladder companies that actually I pushed off. They should have probably came up this year, but I'm a reasonable person, and I thought that, you know, it was impractical for us to bring it forward to this current fiscal year. We have two ladder trucks which run very expensively, those replacements. Most of the frontline service for those fire trucks is about 17 to 18 years, and then they're in reserve status for another four to five years. Usually, the kind of the drop dead on fire apparatuses because they're so far out of modern-day compliance is no longer than a 20-year, 22-year window.
And what's your average fleet age at this point?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't know that offhand. We've replaced some fleet along the lines over the last couple of years. Right at the moment, I don't know exactly what that age is. I most certainly will look that up and get it back to you. But, you know, we have some new, and we still have some old. We don't have any right in the middle range, so it's, we're just kind of hitting critical mass a little bit on our vehicle replacement piece.
Yeah, I mean, those full-size fire trucks are just so darn expensive. If you have a fully functional one today, what would it cost?
A ladder company is probably looking at about 1.1 mil, 1.2 mil. You also have to understand that that has a direct correlation to our insurance services organizing office rating, which today we're rated as a Class II. Each percentage or each numerical drop in that rating has the potential of increasing commercial property rates for insurance by about 8%. So some of those needs are driven by the ISO expectation.
And maintaining those are a critical part of being able to attract new business and business investment.
Yeah, I would not, I'd hate to take a step backwards on our ISO in the last seven years since I've been here. And courtesy of staff, we've been very successful in improving our rating. To take a step back is really detrimental to growth and the potential for this community.
One question, yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chief.
Thanks, chief.
As we move down the list in information technology, the big ticket item there is, of course, the server farm. And this is definitely a max number. You know, hopefully, the number will be less than that as we put it together. Obviously, technology is a big part of our world, and having a safe server farm that's protected from elements as well as any intrusion attacks or anything is important. Also deals with the fact that we have to consolidate server farms. And I believe Nate's here, if you'd like to talk more about IT server farms. We have five or six right now. This would be trying to consolidate some of those and make them a little better, I guess. Turn it to Nate.
Actually, I have seven server farms right now. Our server farm would be something grander than a closet, which we have items in closets. So one of the challenges the city of Prescott has is we support over 55 locations across the Prescott municipal area. What that means is you have redundancy for power backup, generator, equipment, the whole shoot-and-match. And at some point, there's a tipping point there where you spend time chasing your tail, reinventing the wheel, duct taping a duct taped thing to keep it all operational, and at some point, you start missing and chasing and fixing stuff, and you're doing more of that than actually proactively doing things. Having said that, I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Nate? Mark?
Is there a thought for where this would be located?
Yes. It would be located at our Virginia Street campus. It would be a modular device because one of the considerations in our research was what are other people doing to do this? And it would be a shame to build a new facility and find out we want to, say, liquidate the land it's on. Problem, the building is physically attached to that land. Now we get to redo the exercise somewhere else. This would literally be something you disconnect power, water network from, put it on a truck, move it somewhere, set it up, away you go.
Very forward-thinking. I like that. Thank you.
Nate, are you going to get some efficiencies out of the... Nate, are you going to get some, um, efficiencies out of the new city hall?
Yes and no. I would say one of the, one of the challenges we have, not a problem, it's a challenge at this building is you have a mixture of people doing their jobs and a lot of server and network heavy duty stuff. Our old network was oriented around 201 South Cortez being what it is and has been. The new city hall, along with this potential project would separate the money, so to speak, so that you have heavy-duty IT stuff here and only here. And everybody else becomes more similar than they are different. That is a huge operational efficiency in IT in terms of troubleshooting, planning, uh, just operations maintenance of, because you have more things that are similar everywhere than this one special thing. And the special thing itself is more similar to itself than right now we have things just kind of mixed together. So, uh, example, two summers ago, we had an event at the library, a power event. It's not, nothing that could have been anticipated. It was a very odd event. Essentially knocked out the server room at the library. Well, that's not just library stuff. That's stuff across the entire organization that's housed there. And the recovery from that took a good six hours from just a freak event where, no offense to Roger, but if we do this project, the library going down, the city hall going down would only affect the people within that building for the specific things they do, not kind of this thorny knot of gee whiz, we got servers, we got network stuff, we got this, we got that, we got people. And it's really hard to troubleshoot those kinds of scenarios just because of the complexity of it.
So will that have an impact on the number of full-time equivalents that you have, um, supporting your department?
I would say it, it prevents the need to some degree for asking for additional staff down the road because you're losing less staff time to just gee whiz, this broke, where is it? Is it really there? No, our records say it's at the library. It's actually at the dispatch center. Um, it allows for better, um, visibility into problems of being proactive, which is a better efficient use of staff versus just adding staff, right? You could add more staff, but if it's inherently inefficient, I'm not sure that helps. If anything, it makes it worse. Um, and one of the, one of the things you've seen with the last week or so, this pipeline deal out on the east coast. It's like, well, how does that happen? You have dumb dums in IT. I'd like to think we don't. You have products that let you down. You think the shield's going to protect you and it's made out of cheap paper. It doesn't, something blasts right through it. Or you get caught scrambling around as an IT group and you're over here chasing stuff. You're over here putting out fires and you miss something. And all this stuff is automated. All it takes is missing something and you're like, hey, I can't get to my stuff. Hey, I think our stuff's getting encrypted and it's game over at that point. So it's not, I would say it's not so much avoiding the need to add staff. I would say it's being able to use existing staff more effectively and also being more proactive. Cause right now we're in a pretty reactive pattern, which I'm not comfortable with, to be honest.
That's actually good to hear. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Before Nate leaves, uh, just wanted to point out also, we have a slight expansion of our radio, um, infrastructure on there as well, which I don't know if council would like more information on, the North Prescott repeater site. If you're excited about radios. If not, we'll move on.
Is that a yes or a no? Uh, in a nutshell, what that is, is, is when the radio system was conceptualized, there was no deep well, the airport was a little more sleepy than it is now as a part of town. And this is a nod toward the fact that a lot's happening in North Prescott. And the radio coverage out there needs to, to kind of match that and keep, has to, because as a whole, public safety is spending more time and it's not just our public safety. It's CAFMA, PVPD, those folks as well. And it's not a terribly expensive item. It's just kind of comes part and parcel with stuff's happening in North Prescott.
And it's something that we can do with all the, um, um, radio infrastructure upgrades council has allowed us to make over the last years. We can do this kind of expansion relatively simply and cheaply overall. And it also benefits our SCADA system through Public Works because of course there's a lot of Public Works infrastructure out there that uses the radios as well. All right. Um, just running down to, uh, the parking garage. Another piece of deferred maintenance that we've put off for a couple of years. Kept pushing that each year because of financial issues, pandemics and so on, is the last of our stairwells at the parking garage. Um, so that's on there this year to hopefully be done with replacing those stairwells out there. And also to, uh, get a security camera system in there that will be more effective than the one that we've had. Going in police, again, vehicle replacement is a big theme in this year's budget if you haven't got that so far. Um, police has, uh, significant vehicle replacements this year. Again, a lot of the cruiser replacements were deferred because of financial issues. We're trying to bring those up and get those more current this year. With 1.2 million essentially in vehicle replacement in 22 with another 3.6 over the remaining five years. Um, there are some facility enhancements for safety over in the, uh, PD happening in 22. And those, uh, the ones in 23, 27 deal more with, uh, efficiency, I think, over there. If you'd like more information on that. Uh, other things on here, we have replacement dispatch councils, which are paid for by the partnership. Of course, we're 51% member of that partnership, so it does hit our general fund. Uh, Z-tron is the radio system over at dispatch and this is an upgrade, um, they felt necessary over there. And then we get to the golf course, which has a significant project over the next six years, which is replacement of irrigation systems, um, which is, uh, is significant. And as the golf course is not funding itself, which relies on operational support, it definitely relies on capital support from the general fund. So this is a, going to be a hit to the general fund. Any questions on this slide? Questions for Mark? The last kind of general, uh, governmental capital before we get to Public Works is on recreation. Here you see the 4.4 for open space. That's an adjusted number. Uh, the Goldwater Lake expansion is in here. That's a project that we've budgeted the last few years, but it keeps getting deferred just because of uncertainty in the economy and stuff. We have it in here again, um, for budgeting purposes. There's a, a contribution to the adult center Ramada that has been budgeted here. Other trail fences and other things there. I won't read through the whole long boring list, but, uh, answer any questions if you have them and Joe is here if you like more information on any of this. Questions on this slide?
Mayor, I'd just like to suggest that, and it sounds like you guys are good with it. I think the Goldwater Lake expansion is an eco-tourism opportunity that we just need to bite the bullet and proceed. And that's what I was going to say.
Yes, we do.
So summing up these projects, uh, slide 35 kind of gives you a total of where the funds are coming from for all these over the years. Um, as you can see, big hits to the general fund, obviously, uh, streets and a few others have some big hits in there as well. With that, we'll move on to the exciting area of Public Works capital projects and let Craig come up. You want this or that?
Just right or left, Mark?
Yep.
Good afternoon, mayor, council. So Public Works Capital, we have a, a few projects out there to, uh, to work on and continue. So starting off with streets capital projects, so why do we do projects? And/or what type of projects do we do? So we do the preservation rehabilitation projects. So that's specifically regards to the streets and our, our pavement. Circulation projects, those can be new roadways, sidewalk connectivity, bicycle facilities, um, all things like that that can improve or benefit circulation, whether it's traffic bicycles or pedestrians. Then total roadway reconstruction projects, which is complete removal, um, generally, um, major roadway projects like we have coming up for Penn Eastwood, where it will be total pavement, subgrade, curb and gutter, everything that goes with that on the reconstruction. And then there's drainage projects to correct existing drainage issues and/or, um, create new, new drainage to, uh, to help benefit things. Going into the preservation rehabilitation projects. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to ask a question. I noticed your Miller Valley Road is for reconstruction. Is that the entire length of Miller Valley?
No, sir. That will be, um, through the intersection of Miller Valley and Shimmer to the intersection of Miller Valley and Brannon. And that's in relationship to the primary sewer project that is coming in there. Then we're also taking care of the water improvements in that section as well as then the roadway to put the three together. So on preservation and rehabilitation projects. So when we completed the, the pavement management program a couple of years ago and identified that we had about $110 million worth of backlog on pavement repairs and/or maintenance needs. Uh, we significantly increased this budget line item and have been working diligently at meeting that annually in order to reduce that backlog and keep our better pavements in good condition and be whittling on the list of the, of the failed pavements. So, uh, um, some of the projects that, that are currently going on in here right now, uh, you're going to see construction everywhere around the community. So on the rehab side, we'll have Iron Springs and Williamson Valley Road going on very soon. Uh, we're also working on Mystic Canyon, Glen Heather, Sleepy Hollow, Paul, Dixon, Douglas and Smoke Tree, which is a, a major one. Then on the reconstruction side, we have Sierra Vista, Hemlock, Westwood, Evergreen, Fairview Lane, Mountain View, Walker Street, Anderson, Field, Acorn and Estrella. So there will be a significant amount of impact to our customers out there, our residents. We continue to say that when, when we're done, it will be very nice. So please, our customers bear with us. Street recirculation projects, so projects that we have on the docket 422, we're looking at is right here across the street, Prescott Library, um, sidewalk and parking improvements. So this initially came up, uh, in regards to, you know, limited parking there as well as we have the timeline. And snow removal and ice protection on the timeline is very detrimental to it. So we started looking at, at both and how could we improve both? What we've come up with is, um, through not a lot of work, we will realign some of the curb and gutter along there, add a sidewalk right directly behind the curb and gutter to create a new, new passageway for pedestrians after they get out of their vehicles, right there with the curb and gutter. Currently, and you park anywhere on the hill, then you have to walk in the street, either up or down. Um, as well as the roadway is wide enough there, we can reconfigure that into diagonal parking and add additional parking spaces in there and a fairly significant number of additional parking spaces in there. Then that, um, allows the library then and/or, you know, library and Public Works together will limit access to that timeline during the winter. So it doesn't have to be snow and ice maintained. So then you don't have the detrimental impact to that, that product that's there. Cause there'll be new sidewalk and, and improved parking. Uh, intersection signalization, that's, uh, directly associated with Willow Creek Road. We have installed the seven new, um, detection devices on, on seven intersections out there that, uh, that you approved for us just a month or a month and a half ago. So they're all in place. Uh, there's one in that picture on the right-hand side there. It's kind of the new little candy cane that you'll see out there as you go through those intersections. And so they are all installed and we're going to do more in 22. And then that will lead us into when the CYMPO project is completed for, uh, recommendations on timing and, and improvements through that, then we'll have synchronized, um, signals through that corridor. So this, what we did was a first piece of it and now we'll continue in 22 in anticipation of that report. And then we have the sidewalk repair and replacement program too, that, uh, that we will continue. Reconstruction projects, the majors coming up in 22, Penn Eastwood. So that is total replacement from Gurley all the way to the top of the hill up to, uh, Devon Row, including all the little Daniel David cul-de-sacs that are in that center area also. It is, uh, total pavement, curb and gutter, drainage, water, sewer, everything through that corridor. Um, the gas company has just finished up. So we are, um, going to be updating the plans with all the as-built information from the gas company APS um, and other utility relocations that were done. So then the plans have all that new information on now. We'll complete that and then be putting it out to bid this summer. Then, uh, Miller Valley Road is, is the one that Councilman Shushka asked about already in, uh, relationship to the water and sewer project there, or sewer and water. Drainage improvements. So we're anticipating, um, and have been accepted for a, uh, $130,000 FEMA grant there. Uh, that, that will continue to help the, the, the mapping review and alteration that's going on, uh, both in, uh, in downtown area here as well as, um, out on Willow Creek. So we have that. We're anticipating 825,000 through the Yavapi Flood Control District. That is labeled as pending there because it has to go through their, um, board's approval. That is what Public Works or, or the Flood Control District has earmarked for us. Just need their, uh, their board approval for the, the finalization on that. And then we'll have 175,000 towards streets funds. Um, we are just finishing up citywide drainage improvements. The one on the right is one of the improvements that, uh, was just added in the Yavapi Hills area. And then we'll have the Penn Eastwood Detention Basin. The picture on the left there is actually the Acker Park Detention Basin that was completed a couple of years ago here. And just as soon as that product, that, that device was completed and put online, we noticed the difference down through the rest of the city, downstream of it. Um, it happens that, that that flowage, um, comes down to the backside of the Public Works building. And it used to come up and out of that wash and go through our parking lot and then would drop back in. And since that's there, it no longer does that. And, and we noticed that it runs out there for a significant time period instead of that, that flash flood event. So the Penn Eastwood Detention Basin, then we'll take care of the whole, um, rush Bradshaw down to Yavapai College and the, the drainage challenges that have happened there over the years. Water, water capital projects. So we have water production projects. So those are primarily storage tanks, pump stations, wells, everything that, that you produce the water and/or then store it to go out into the distribution system. The comments with Mark and both Nate on the IT side in regards to the, the recent hack and/or ransom on the, um, gas delivery system. That, that is something on the water side that, that we've been concerned about as well and considered and, and discussed and reviewed as part of our SCADA system on the water production side. And so when we completed our designs, we made sure that with our designs that if, if something like that happens, someone gets into our system, we have the ability to go to our facilities and go in there and manually disconnect that computer system from the facility so that we can operate it manually and/or with other controls locally at that station. And we are not 100% resilient on the, that computer system. So we have that safety in place. Water distribution then is, is replacing the, the main lines throughout our streets and/or service lines up to the properties. And then we have water quality projects associated with like the TMDL and stormwater. So water production is a big chunk of our capital program that we have coming up at the 25, so over 25 million. So some of those projects are the intermediate booster pump station out in the airport area. And that will have a, a direct impact or benefit to the airport economic area to be able to better serve and/or supply additional water for commercial industrial expansion out there in that area. Zone 41 pump station, uh, that is associated with, uh, our infrastructure in the Mingus area. Mingus Douglas north side in, in there. Um, that's full replacement of pump station, uh, replace the two Mingus tanks with a single and then pipeline improvement. Replace the two Mingus tanks with a single and then pipeline improvements as well. Zone 56, that is in the Lowe's SR 69 corridor. So that's very similar. It'll be a new tank. That tank will go on the hillside above York Motors. And then pipeline improvements. One phase of that pipeline improvement project is out to bid right now. That will be in State Route 69 between U-Haul and Lowe's. So we get that project done and out of the way in anticipation of ADOS widening project coming, should be the end of this calendar year is where they're headed. There also will be new pump station with that project. We're going to begin or step into the design process then for production well number three rehabilitation out in Chino Valley. And same thing, we'll start design on Zone 30 Pump Station, which is a secondary feed which will create redundancy as well as increased fire protection into the Cathedral Pines area on the very southern part of the city. So that will complete all the improvements across the entire southern side of the city when we bring that into place. Because now we've finished the Hazely project. We've done up Copper Basin Road in years past. So that entire area was very weak before these projects. This will be the last one down there. Zone 52 Water Main. That is clearing the northwest side Williamson Valley Road, Longview area. So that is to create a pipeline connection from our northwest regional tank, which is above Pioneer Parkway and take the water up to Longview in order to eliminate the small tank and pump station that's at that location. Water distribution. We're finishing up design on the Rocky Dells, Juniper Vista, Karen project. So Rocky Dells is in the Thumbute area. And then Juniper Vista, Karen is off of Senator Highway, just at the edge of city limits. So those are both replacements, a very small two-inch and such in the Juniper Vista, Karen area. And Rocky Dells is old ACP pipe that has reached the end of its life expectancy and has been experiencing a fair amount of failures. Zone 2427, that will be the final piece of a multi-year, several projects in the Thumbute area. So that will upsize the existing distribution mains to act as both transmission and distribution in the Thumbute area from like West Thumbute and Sherwood and then going up into that Thumbute neighborhood area. And then we're going to be starting design on downtown water main replacement. That one can be involved. So we have been talking about and we are planning on looking at going for trenchless technology alternatives if we can, as much as we can. Otherwise, it means total obliteration of our streets in the downtown area. And we're talking about water distribution system down there. It's 90-plus years old. So it's time. But there are new enough, newer technologies where we feel that we can take advantage of trenchless and maybe have significantly less impact on everyone that uses the downtown as well as the streets.
Is there a way you could quickly describe what some of those technologies might look like?
There is combination can do pipe bursting. There is slip lining for water systems as well. And the slip lining, there's a number of different types of technologies. So then potentially it's only excavation at valve locations and/or service connections. So we did replace all of the service lines, box and yokes, everything in that when we did the downtown enhancement phases back in 98, 99, 2000. So the services are in good shape. Now it's a matter of the main lines that we have to get updated.
Amazing.
Water quality projects. So we have planned in there is Watson Lake Improvements coming out of the TMDL report and all of the recommendations from our study that we got from the consultant. We have here aeration and fish. Both of those are good recommendations and good items to help improve the water quality there. But they're ultimately, they're addressing a symptom, not the cause. So long-term, we've still got to be looking at continuing to address the causes. Otherwise, we continue to spend money on symptoms.
I read this morning, I read this morning by a very intelligent individual that we don't know it creates our pollution in our water.
I read that as well. We're all entitled to our opinions.
But the amount of money this city has spent with the TDMLs and all the different scientists that have come to us to talk about why our water bodies are impaired. What are we going to do to let the public know that's not really the truth?
We're going to have to pull that science out of these reports and provide small, simple bits of information that address those things and identify those impacts and not expect, you know, our customers to read that entire report and try to, you know, make heads or tails out of it.
Just one suggestion, because we're talking about something that's important to me when it comes to water quality and the environment. You start talking about the amount of money we've spent doing this so far. How many of our sewer lines that lie within our tributaries out there have not been upgraded? As far as manholes, we've done a lot of pipe busting in those creek beds so that they're no longer leaching. I mean, a lot of the problems that we've had have been co-mingled with septic systems as well as our own failures of our own lines. Have we corrected most of those?
We have corrected a significant number of our lines that are in those systems over the last 20 years. There are a lot of them. And we have a couple more projects that we're working on currently that will continue to improve those systems.
And you start talking about nitrates and E. coli, those only come from two places. And I think we have identified those. So I hope we keep pushing forward and letting the public know that we have been working hard on cleaning up what we own. Thank you.
Wastewater capital projects. So we have two types there, wastewater collection projects. So these are all of the lines that gather the flow right directly from the commercial businesses, residential houses, everything, and then transport it to the treatment facilities, including lift stations that are part of that system. And then we have the wastewater treatment projects directly at the treatment facilities or associated with them. Collections projects for this coming year. Sun Dog Trunk Main Phase C. We had the pre-bid meeting on that this morning. So it is out to bid and we'll be bringing that forward to you very soon. So that is replacing some of the lines that are directly in Miller Creek and at the confluence with... I can't come up with that other one, the branch. Maybe it's going to be Thumbute and Miller, right in the vicinity of the Lincoln Low Water Crossing. So that picks it up there. We'll continue to the west to Miller Valley Road and then over to the old Gasomat location within Miller Valley Road. So that's what Sun Dog Trunk Main C is. Willow Creek Trunk Main. That is to, we're changing our system operation method out in the Willow Lake area. So currently we have a regional lift station at the western end of Willow Lake and Willow Creek, right there. And then we pump it all the way across Willow Lake Road and up to SR 89. So this project, instead of reconstructing, rebuilding that lift station and Forest Main to provide us years of service, we have the ability to replace it and run gravity all the way over to Preska Lakes Parkway and Willow Lake Road and then have one larger regional facility there to handle it. So that design is ongoing for that trunk main. And Ruger Road Sewer Main. So that is upsizing our existing undersized gravity line that runs to the airport water reclamation facility or leaving the facility up to the runway, crosses the runway, and will go up Ruger Road a short distance. That project we have out there and it will benefit, again, the airport commercial industrial activities in that area. We also are trying to be proactive with it to get it out and done before the runway extension comes. So when it's time for the runway extension, we don't have a sewer issue and/or sewer in the way for that project. So that's underdesigned right now and will come up for construction in 22. And then the Monizuma Trunk Main. That is to upsize the line from essentially Granite Street at Hilton Hotel or the founding fathers area. From there, we have to head south all the way to and through Mile High Middle School Track area to upsize that existing line in there. So then that project also will have pavement involvement within Granite Street when we go through with it.
Is any part of that in the creek?
No, sir. It's in, that will be impactful on downtown because that is in Granite Street all the way through there.
Okay, thank you.
Wastewater treatment projects. So another piece of centralization now is bringing into play a new effluent tank. So that ultimately will eliminate the need for the open reservoirs at Preska Lakes Parkway and Sun Dog Ranch Road. Because now, as we start to centralize and treat all the wastewater at the airport, then it's going to be A-plus water. We bring it back and put it in those ponds, then we lose our A-plus rating because we have natural influences in those ponds. We have ideas and discussions on how to maintain some type of a water attractant in that area for the water flow to continue with the benefit of, you know, kind of that quality of life for our area in the Watson Woods. So we've got that thought in the process of that. But then we'll include a new effluent tank in the vicinity of the entrance to Watson Lake Park. So then that will feed the effluent system from there. It includes a pipeline through the Dells on SR 89. We have to go through there again. And it will also initiate the beginning of the concept and planning design considerations for SR 89 widening. So it will be a multi-year process where this is the first piece then coming through the Dells with that. It also, once we complete this, then it allows us to alter the existing, one of the existing pipelines that goes through there in order to change its use.
What does that mean?
So currently we are sending treated effluent from the Sun Dog Wastewater Treatment Plant north through the Dells, through a 24-inch pipeline. We will not need a 24-inch pipeline there long-term with centralization. So we can change it from using an effluent to transporting raw wastewater north by slip lining it. So then we can build a 12-inch pipeline through the Dells to bring effluent back and reuse that 24-inch pipe. So then we build a new 12-inch instead of a new 24-inch in order to save monies associated with that.
Okay, thank you.
Craig?
Yes.
How big is your effluent wastewater tank going to be there at Watson?
I believe we are considering a couple million gallons.
A couple of million?
Yeah.
Boy, that's going to be pretty, pretty much of a... That's a huge tank, a couple million, like 3 million? Is it going to be recessed any or is it going to be pretty prominent?
We have the ability to tuck it in around the corner where there's existing hill and such. And I believe you'll go down the highway and people won't even realize it's over there.
Okay, alrighty, thank you.
So here's the roll-up for FY '22 with all the projects together. Those then FY '23 through '27. Definitely on the street side when it comes, maintenance includes the pavement preservation and that. So that's where we get that eight and a half million a year to be that 42.5 over that '23 to '27 range. And others, be happy to answer any questions.
If I may. When you went back, one of the first slides talking about FEMA and the ongoing changes and how much we pay for the remapping of these creeks, at what point in time are we going to say enough's enough? That the creek beds that they continue to keep remapping have not changed in the last 80, 90, 100 years? But yet every single year, I see a line item in there to, for FEMA remapping? When does that stop?
I understand what you're saying. And what's being done right now is incorporation of new, better topography information in there. So then that ultimately has the opportunity and has already created benefits out in the airport area where we had residential lots on the old mapping that were in a flood zone. So then it was costing those residents additional, they had to have, you know, the additional flood insurance, things like that. So it was costing them every year and/or it puts restrictions on properties. So when we get to the downtown area, we want to have it accurate so that we don't have inherent restrictions on properties that would restrict a commercial business from coming in.
I guess that's my point. Over there off of Gil Gardner, there's, you know, 60, 80 years' worth of houses and mobile homes and those types of things. And every time they change that flood map where that creek has never been out of that as long as I can ever remember, they're creating $500 to $1,000 expense for these folks in flood insurance when they've never had to pay it before. So one year they adjust it up, next year they adjust it down, next year they adjust it up, and the water flow doesn't change. So is it just ongoing to keep the government happy and funded?
And what you're referring to there was, yeah, when FEMA did the major overview of everything, yes. It brought in exactly what you described there, is it brought properties in. So now the work we're doing is looking at it closer and bringing better information in in order to be able to back that out. As well as our consultant came up with a different way of calculating, a different way of looking at it, and reduce the storm duration. And that's made a big difference. So then that is going to help with those properties. And not to be, you know, fluid with or disregard the spending of money. At least the money that we are spending on this right now, it's coming from the grants. So at least it's not coming out of our budget.
I totally get it, but every time we figure out a new math or figuring out a new calculation when nothing's changed. So at what point in time do we finally say, we don't have to map this anymore? We're not creating more flood zones. They're not bringing any more volumes of water. Matter of fact, we've slowed the volumes of water down because of all these catch basins we've put in. So what point in time does it stop or does it ever?
I think it can definitely slow. Because yes, you're right, there has been a consistent change and/or work going on in regards to looking at those flood areas. But I definitely think it can slow because we're getting everything incorporated now with that better technology and better information regards to topography and this new reduced storm events.
I have very little hope because every time there's a major hurricane or some kind of something FEMA can put their arms around, they want to choke your neck a little bit more. So, but I thank you for working on it.
That's true. Craig, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Expanding and widening the Narrows in '89 and through the Dells.
Okay.
So we heard a couple of years ago that the maximum capacity in that area is about 18,000 vehicles per day.
For a higher service level of travel? Yes, that's correct.
And probably in the very near future, we're going to be hitting that capacity. And there is some plans that we put together for working in that area. So, yeah, I don't see any reference to it here in our capital plans. Didn't we have a traffic counter that we used for a short period of time out there to kind of figure out what the numbers look like most recently?
We have the ability to get traffic counts. I believe our limitation is go back two weeks. We can go back two weeks and then we can pick any timeframe. We can go back two weeks and then we can pick any timeframe behind that and we can get traffic county information from the existing contract that we have.
I mean, this is going to have such a huge impact on circulation. About the same time, we're going to see ADOT finally getting going on the widening of 69. And with that, through the Frontier Village area, we'll have more vehicles trying to find alternate routes. And as the development up in Deepwell Ranch and as the capacity of the airport expands as well, we can just know that we're going to have a lot more vehicles traveling through those Narrows. So being able to have a well-planned plan to expand into two lanes on each side just has to be put together and, and kind of getting started on it.
Yes, and that will be part of, as I mentioned with the, the, on the wastewater treatment side, part of the centralization with the pipeline that'll go through the Dells, conversion of the other pipe, the effluent tank. Those are all the stepping stones on that wastewater system in order to, not only does it bring centralization in, then it gets that work done on the utility side through the Dells. So then we step right into and/or include the review and consideration for the widening as part of that project as well. So then we roll it right into that design for that widening.
I just think the plans for circulation are so necessary to be looked at because we have all these interconnecting projects that are going to cause people to try to figure ways around it. And it's going to impact other arteries very significantly. And without that kind of planning, we're going to be in some real traffic congestion troubles.
And with, on the timing side, the SR 69 project should be wrapping up before we start construction, being that, that we will just be starting our design in, in July or, you know, early this fall, we'll just be starting the design. So our design will be going on while theirs is, is finishing and going to construction. So then that project should be able to be done and then we roll into ours.
Well, that sounds like a very coordinated plan. I certainly hope it works. Thanks, Craig.
Anything else for Craig?
Rocking the Bolo tie in.
Thanks, Craig.
Did you two coordinate on shirt colors today?
Oh. Why, yes, we did. Thank you for noticing. Thank you. So that completes the workshop today. Went through the whole budget, the capital, the operations in summary, again, operations in detail are out on the web. Glad to answer any additional questions. We have another workshop scheduled for next Tuesday morning. If council has something else they'd like to do or if we want to just go through these slides again, I think that'd be a lot of fun.
If you do that, you're going to turn the air conditioner on.
No, don't have the budget, sorry.
Yeah, feels that way. Yeah, exactly.
Council.
Any questions for Mark here? Wrapping up, yeah, go ahead.
Maybe from left field, but the streetlight fee.
Yes.
I remember many years ago, we took over the streetlights from APS and started charging a $6 fee to all the, it's all on all the water bills and not just residential, but commercial and business. Everyone pays the streetlight fee and I was just wondering maybe next time we could talk about how much it generates and how it's used.
It generates about $220 a year. It's, it's 50 cents a month, so $6 a year. It's used to defray the cost of operating the streetlights, which is significant, as well as upgrading streetlights, changing streetlights, expanding the system.
I think it's $6 a month.
No, it's not. It's about 50 cents a month, I believe. Yeah.
75?
75, 50 or 75 cents a month.
But also just so we're clear, as far as us as, as the city and public works, the only streetlights that we operate and maintain are the historic ones in the downtown area here, the, the black historic poles with the big globe. Those are the only ones that we operate and maintain. The rest of the streetlights on the general streets, Willow Creek Road, everything, those are all operated and maintained by APS. We then have to fund the electricity from them.
Maintenance.
Seems like we have an agreement where we pay them.
Right.
For that work.
Yes, we pay them for the maintenance and the, and the upkeep and valve bulb replacement and all that.
Okay, well, I'm going to review some more of my bills because I thought I was paying $6 a month, not just $6 a year.
That's just special for yours.
Yeah, just.
You're, you're welcome to pay $6, that'd be helpful.
Okay, alrighty, thank you.
Anything that the council would like to talk about next week?
I don't, I don't know about next week, but I do have a real quick question. It's a math question for you because you're the math guy. So I'm, I'm looking back at the first several slides. Total revenues projected for financial '22, $193 million and change. Total expenditures, $228 million and change. Tell me where the.
That's governmental math.
Okay, okay. I'm sure we've, we've had efficiencies and savings over the years. We have things in, is that, is that a typical difference between revenues and expenditures? And if not, why? And is it related to the pandemic and in what ways, et cetera?
So let me just read, to summarize, so when we look, look at revenues, I brought the slide up here. We have $145 million in operating revenues and then we have another 48 million in non-operating revenues. So, which is 193. And your question is the differential between the 193 and the 228?
Yeah, if you, if you go down two slides, the projected expenditures for the year is substantially higher.
228, yes, correct. Lot of those are capital. They have been accumulated in prior years. As we look at the, sorry, I don't mean to make people sick going so quick through these slides. This slide, which is the fund balance slide on slide 25. You'll see the operating surplus or deficit.
Sure.
And then the fund balances are being spent from prior years, especially in the general fund. We've have accumulation of fund balance that we're using for capital projects that are up there.
And the fund balances are relatively high because we have been very careful about expenses over the last couple of years, particularly during.
Exactly. During the unknown pandemic, you know, you don't know what it's going to be. We always tried to play very conservatively. You don't want to be caught short.
But off the top of your head, and I wouldn't ask anybody else this, but five, six years ago, what, what would have been a typical differential between funds and expenditures in a, in a standard year?
It, and, and part of the complicating factor here is we don't always achieve the capital that we put out there.
Sure.
So even though we have this, we come 30 million short.
Yep.
That 30 million's there again. You really want to, not really, but it's good to focus on the operating revenues and operating expenses because those are more definite, those are more ongoing, those can't be deferred. Police officer works today, they want to get paid today as opposed to we can put off maintenance on a staircase at the garage or whatever. So typically we do have a spread like this between our revenues and our expense, but it's because of the capital and the fact that the capital just isn't getting accomplished.
Super good education for me, thank you.
Sure. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to at least propose that we have a short additional meeting next week. I know in the past when I've looked at budget proposals, being able to listen to the community at large and those people that do pay attention to a lot of the wants versus needs, I think it's important that at least we give the time for the public that does monitor some of these things to weigh in. And if it turns out that we might be overlooking some of the meat here that might be modified more appropriately, then we have the opportunity to do that. Otherwise, I think it's just appropriate that we take a little time to analyze all these different line items and make sure that we end up with a budget that we can all defend and be, and be sufficiently convinced that it's necessary for next fiscal year.
And Councilman Good, was your suggestion in public session, did you say, when did you would like to do that?
For the, the next workshop.
Okay, yeah, of course. Any other thoughts in that regard?
And if I could just get clarification, what you would like to go over at that workshop? Well, until I hear from public input, I can't really give you a detail.
Okay.
But I'm sure with your thorough preparation, you shouldn't have much problem responding to that.
Okay, no problem. And if you have something specific, let me know beforehand so we can have information available.
We'll need to publish an agenda on Thursday, so.
I would assume that the agenda could just look a lot like this agenda.
Yeah.
And I don't think it needs to be much different. I, I think it's perfectly reasonable when you're going through $228 million of public funds that you have two meetings. It's fine and it's easy.
And, and beyond that, on the 8th of June, we have the tentative budget consideration by council, which is another opportunity to discuss things. And also on the 22nd of June, we'll have final budget consideration. Just wanted to hit those dates for people listening.
And Mark and Mayor and Council, if it's okay, we can do the secondary workshop next week at the 2:00 PM study session slot. We'll have an executive session at 1:00 and then we can do the study at 2:00 and then the voting meeting at 3:00.
Sounds good. That'll work, sufficient time.
You know, I think it's important, not necessarily to cover some of the individual department stuff where it talks about employees, but I think it's incredibly important to talk about what Public Works did to inform us on all the different projects that are coming up so we can, the public can see where the money goes because most of it's underground and they don't understand it. So I don't understand a lot of it, so I'm always glad to hear the presentation while we're sitting here.
Yeah, makes sense, Councilman. Anything else for Mark? Other questions, comments?
Amazing job. So much information presented in a way that even I could understand. I really, really appreciate it.
Thanks. And again, it's a citywide effort, hundreds of hours across all departments, all these people out here as well. I'm just the face man.
All right, I don't think there's anything else on the agenda for us today, so this meeting is adjourned.